I'd like to call the order, the March 21st, 2024 Miami Spur City School Board Meeting. Stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettner?
Here.
Mr. Mowry?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mrs. McGowan? Uh, Mrs. Ogilbor? Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mrs. Stocker?
Here.
Uh, Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Next we have the adoption of the agenda, and the recommended action is approval of the adoption of the agenda for March 21st, 2024. D, approval of minutes. The recommended action is approval of minutes for financial committee meeting held on February 15th, 2024, regular board meeting held on February 5th, 2024, and special board meeting work session sessions held on February 20th, 2024, and February 29th, 2024. Next we have the approval of a financial report for February 29th, 2024. We'll let Mr. Cleveland speak to that.
So we're getting close to the five-year forecast, so as we get further away from the last filed forecast, the monthly reports start to show more changes, and then those get addressed in the May forecast. Discrepancy this month was on revenue, it looked like we were under by quite a bit, and that's due to a timing issue when we received the tax advance. So the tax advantage was received on March 3rd, so it will show up in the next month's monthly report.
Any questions? All right. Next we move on to our recognition of citizens, staff, and students. And we want to start out with our Student of the Month, Brooks Haddix, from Bear Elementary School.
Ms. Corey, are you gonna read? Who's gonna read?
I am. The Miami Spur School's February District Student of the Month is Bear Elementary School student, kindergarten student. Brooks Haddix. Brooks was nominated by his teacher Caitlin Bell. Ms. Bell said, "With a heart full of kindness and a mind full of responsibility, Brooks has consistently shown respect for his classmates, teachers, and the school. Whether it's through listening attentively during lessons, helping a friend in need, or cleaning up after himself and others, Brooks demonstrates a deep understanding of what it means to show respect in all aspects of school life. Even though he is only in our seventh month at kindergarten, he already understands that his actions affect others. He consistently makes choices that reflect maturity and responsibility. He takes his learning seriously and shows great enthusiasm with a strong desire to challenge himself. He is consistently motivated to learn something new, build something bigger and better, solve problems in different ways, and read at the next level. Brooks is willing to share his knowledge and regularly helps his classmates in any way that is needed. It is not often that educators find students of any age with this level of passion for learning. Combining Brooks' inquisitive mind and awareness of others leads to a student who knows kindness, respect, and responsibility on a daily basis. It is a truly unique kindergarten student that deserves to be recognized for all of his exemplary traits. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks."
So who did you bring with you this evening?
My mom and dad.
Oh, and your brother. Has he ordered them either?
I ordered them.
Okay. Well, congratulations. And I didn't realize you were so, kindergarten and you're so tall. My goodness. Do you like to play basketball?
Yeah.
Excellent. Are you watching the March Madness right now? Who did you pick to go all the way?
Between that one and a couple hours.
Yeah? You remember what their name is? Well, the next time I bring her, I want you to tell her, okay? So is your teacher here tonight?
Yeah.
Who's your teacher? Yeah, and what about your principal? Maybe we can get some pictures. But I've got something for you. We have our Student of the Medallion, a Student of the Month medallion, and a cool t-shirt. What do you think? What do you think? You like that? It matches your shirt. Very nice. Okay, well, you want to have Mom and Dad come up and we'll get a picture? Or we can go over there and get a picture with him, wherever you want. Wherever you want to get a picture. Where do you want to get a picture? Up here? All right. You guys come up and get a picture from Mr. Holman. I already got a picture of my feet. You guys get a picture.
We've been playing.
Do you want your principal?
Yeah, you got it. Sorry. Was he in your life? And then you want to hear your, um, your teacher and your principal come on too, right? Okay, come on, please. Can you look over there?
This way. Did you know what's mine?
I love this shirt. It's so cute. Bless you. You want to shake everybody's hand?
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Brooks. Very good. Next we have our, um, one of our cast members from the Little Mermaid performance that's coming up, isn't it April 22nd, 23rd?
Twenty-six through the 28th.
Twenty-sixth and 28th, um, here at Memorial. So we have Maggie Arnett, and she's going to perform for us.
You have the podium?
Yes, sure.
Hello, my name is Maggie Arnett, and I'm a senior at Miami Spur High School, and I'm the president of the Miami Spur High School Drama Club. I would first like to thank the Miami Spur Board of Education for inviting us here today to talk about our upcoming spring musical, The Little Mermaid. I'd like to share a little bit about the drama club and my experiences with theater at Miami Spur High School. When I was a freshman, I was a freshman when theater finally came back after COVID-19. We performed Romeo and Juliet, the musical. With the cast of about 15 kids, I immediately fell in love with performing arts. With each following year, more and more students and cast and crew would join. They too found benefit in being a part of an organization that supports individuality and creativity that helps us grow as both students and performers. This year, I'm excited to say that we have a cast and crew of around 42 people in grade seven through 12, students who thrive from being in performing arts and getting the chance to sing, dance, and act on stage. This year's show is led by our director Donna Roth, vocal director Caitlin Piper, and choreographer Virginia Elson. These wonderful women have helped us find our passion and guided us to work hard and support one another to achieve the ultimate goal of putting on the best show possible for our schools and our community. The Little Mermaid will take place on April 26th through 28th. Shows will be at 7:00 PM on Friday, April 26th, Saturday, April 27th, and matinee performances at 2:00 PM on Saturday, April 27th, and Sunday, April 28th. All performances will be held here in the Memorial Auditorium. Tickets for the show will be $10. For students, military, and seniors, $12 for adults. We are very appreciative of the support the district has given us so far, but we are hoping that you will help us make this show accessible for every Miami Spur student who would like to attend and cannot afford the $10 ticket. We have a few ideas how we can make this happen, so we hope that we can open up a discussion so we can help entertain our younger audiences and possibly inspire them to one day be a part of the Miami Spur Drama Club. We hope that this passion, we hope that this program continues to grow so every student can have access and benefits to the performing arts and enjoy being a part of a theater family the way that I and many other students have. Please enjoy this number of part of your world from The Little Mermaid. Thanks again, and we hope to see you at the show. All Miami Spur staff is minted free, wait, minted to attend free, so free tickets.
Everybody, what's your name again?
Maggie.
Maggie?
Yeah.
Maggie. Hey. That was awesome. Thank you so much. Takes a lot of courage to stand at a thing like that in front of people, and you nailed it. Should be really proud of yourself.
What time are the shows on? The 26th, 27th, and 28th? Do you have evening and matinee performances?
Yeah, on Saturday, there's gonna be a show at 2:00 and a show at 7:00, and then on Friday, it's gonna be at 7:00, and on Sunday, it's gonna be at 2:00.
Thank you. Yes, it was lovely, Maggie, and it gave me goosebumps. I wanted to sing along, but that would have ruined it.
I thought you were next.
Sing with me, David. All right. All right.
Hey, Brooks and Maggie, you guys are free to go.
Yeah.
Can I go?
And I do believe the local Dairy Queen is open now, so you know. Thank you, give it back. Just saying. Just saying.
Next we're gonna recognize National School Library Month. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize April as National School Library Month. The theme for National Library Week 2024, Ready, Set, Library, promotes the idea that libraries are places to get connected to technology by using broadband, computers, and other resources. Libraries also offer opportunities to connect with media programs, ideas, and classes in addition to books. Most importantly, libraries also connect communities to each other. Overall, the theme is an explicit call to action, an invitation for communities to join, visit, or advocate for their local libraries. First sponsored in 1958, National Library Month is a national observance sponsored by the American Liberty Association and libraries across the country each April. It is a time to celebrate the contribution of our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. It is recommended that the Board of Education express its appreciation for our school media specialists and media paraprofessionals who teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, provide literature appreciation activities, support classroom literacy instruction, and guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. The Miami Spur City School District would also like to recognize the following groups on their special days. Assistant Principals Appreciation Week, April 1st through the 5th. School Librarian Appreciation Day, Thursday, April 4th. Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, Friday, April 5th. National Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 21st through the 27th. Administrative Professionals Day, April 24th. Thank you to all of those persons in our district. All right. So next we'll move on to G. Approval of meeting opening items C through F. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve meeting opening items C through F. Do I have a motion?
I move for the meeting opening items C Charlie through F, box drop.
Second. So first by Mr. Amsler, and second by Mrs. Gettner. Roll call please, unless there's any discussion.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mowry?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next we'll move on to public comments. First of all, each person who wishes to address the board shall complete this form prior to the beginning of the meeting. It's our green form, and it helps us to govern, it's one of the rules that governs our meeting. Commenters, commentators, commentators will give his/her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak. The first 15 minutes only of public participation will be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional 15 minutes for discussion of other topics will provide a total time of 30 minutes for public comments. We will give a 30-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. Um, I do not believe we have anyone that wants to speak about the agenda. We have, um, one person that wants to speak, just general comments, and I think that's Christine Behrens. Okay.
You pronounced it correctly.
Oh, okay. All right. Just state your name and your address, please.
Christine Behrens, Miami Spur, Ohio, Cleveland Spur. And that was my first statement. So, um, I first want to express my appreciation for teachers, school librarians, oh, school bus drivers, and all of their school staff, their extraordinary work. Thank you, and the passion and the competition in which they do it, and thank you to the board for your service. I strongly believe in the safety and well-being of the kids in our community. I am an advocate and ally for the LGBTQ population, and I am concerned about the amount of hate and fear that is being leveraged towards this vulnerable population state and nationwide. LGBTQ kids deserve the support and love they need to be who they are. They need safe spaces to be in without the fear of rejection and hate. In February of this year, the American Psychological Association stated that it opposes bans on gender-affirming care for transgender youth. They noted that the fear, hate, and misinformation surrounding LGBTQ youth, in particular transgender kids, creates, quote, "A distorted perception of the psychological and medical support necessary for these youth, creating a hostile environment that adversely affects their mental health and well-being," unquote. They go on to say, quote, "Gender-based bias and mistreatment pose significant harm, including the risk of suicide," unquote. In 2022, the CDC noted that suicide is the second-leading cause of death among 10- to 14-year-olds and the third-leading cause of death among 15- to 24-year-olds. LGBTQ youth are at significantly higher risk, being more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. The Trevor Project, a leading suicide prevention and crisis intervention organization, notes that this population is not, quote, "inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at a higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society," unquote. All of our youth deserve to be affirmed, loved, and have spaces in which they are safe to be who they are. As I become more familiar with our school community, it appears that this is the reality for our youth. This matters, and it hopes, and it might hope that it continues. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Next we'll move on to our consent agenda. First we have approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trip. Barb Goralski, MMS, 2025 eighth-grade Washington DC trip. Tia Louisa, Miami Spur, NBCCTC, FFA Summer Camp. Guess that's West Carrollton, Ohio. And then B, out-of-state travel, overnight student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel. Megan Smallwood, MHS Italy and France student field trip, Rome, Florence, Milan, Italy and Paris, France. Student trip was approved February 15th, 2024. Tia Louisa, Miami Spur, NBCCTC, FFA Summer Camp, West Carrollton, Ohio, or I guess it's just Carrollton, Ohio. And then we have Ravela Lawson, Lindsay Daffler, Brandy Henry, William Weinberg, Sarah Horstman, Jennifer Harold, Matthew Gilbert, Michelle Lieber, Renee Oppenberger, Jennifer Bongsi, Ryan Kopsi, Ashley Trupp, Cheryl McNutt, Christopher Clinton, Catherine Fraser, Summer Masternardi, Jeanne Tovine, Christine Johnson, Jessica Lutley, Kimberley Sanders, Sarah Slampa, Jamie Trent, Carol Parker, Chelsea Allen, Michael Furma, and Robbie Blathers. And that's for the Miami Spur Middle School eighth-grade Washington DC trip, and the trip was approved May 18th, 2023. We'll move on to C. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the $7,500 mini grant appropriation for the 2024-25 school year. This is a joint funding program between the Board of Education and the Miami Spur Schools Education Foundation Advisory Board. And then D. The superintendent and the director of business services recommend that six students be released or accepted for transportation purposes for the 2023-24 school year. Release transportation liability to Lebanon City Schools for five students from Miami Spur City Schools for transportation services to attend Lebanon Christian Elementary School and Lebanon Christian Middle School. This is due to after-school care located in the Lebanon School District. Accept transportation liability from West Carrollton for one student for transportation services to attend Dayton Christian Schools. Then E, Michael Black, principal of Miami Spur High School, has recommended Emily Angel, Angelo Eldridge, Mackenzie Geisel, Brianna Gregory, and Sarah Sahel for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. And then F, approval of board member training. In accordance with board policy, BHBA is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following requests for training offered by the Ohio School Board Association, March 22nd, Ohio School Board Association, Levy University, and Peace. And last, we have the approval of consent items A through F. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through F. Do I have a motion? I recommend that the Board of Education approve consent items, and move that the Board of Education approve consent items A through F.
Second.
Okay, so first by Mrs. Gettner, and second by Mr. Daffler. All right, any discussion or questions about consent items A through F? I'm glad, Ian, that you're gonna be able to go to the Levy University and bring back that information for us. Thanks. I like that it's an in-home one.
Yeah.
Be able to sit there with my coffee and all that, so.
What is the Levy University? I'm sorry.
I went to one like three years ago, but there's some new guidance from the State Auditor's Office that, you know, I may have to in, um, so that we always follow the rules and so forth. It's just the training. I can tell you a little bit more about it.
That's okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, um, just a very detailed explanation of various kinds of levies, learn about inside and outside middle age, and then hear about that recent guidance from the Ohio Auditor of State's office. It helps you define the role of superintendent, treasurer, and board member in the process if that ever comes about.
When you're there, if you wouldn't mind specifically looking this up for me, I've been told that we're at our Levy ceiling, Justin, we're 20, so a ceiling, right?
Four, 2004.
2004, and that means that that can't fill up anymore? Is that what that means?
No, it means that it can't be reduced any further.
It can't be reduced any further. If you could bring back any information, I would love to read it.
Yeah, they, they give you handouts, so I can definitely share those. Yeah, so I can share those digitally, or I can have them run off as well.
Yeah, and item B is Nyla Representing Us in Italy.
Not this time.
You're a little traveler. Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right, roll call then.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
All right. On consent agenda two, we have a lot of resolutions to file complaints against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three Alpine Income Property. This is, the first one is the Alpine Income Property. Mr. Glevins, do you want to talk about all this before I even start making the resolutions? Okay.
So, House Bill one twenty-six made a lot of changes to the way the boards of education can be involved in the border revision process, and so one of those changes was that now they have to file original complaints on property where the sale price exceeds present value by both ten percent and five hundred thousand dollars. So all these listed here are going to meet those requirements. Boards of education both notify the affected property owner and take official action by adopting a resolution to authorize the filing of these original complaints. So what the board's doing is by adopting this resolution and authorizing the administration and legal counsel to continue with the required procedure to prosecute the complaint in question, you procedurally allow us to do that.
Are we enabling you specifically to complain against what?
So, so by doing this, you.
Not you, but you don't.
Right. You give the admin and legal counsel permission to say that, hey, the county is saying this property was valued at this amount, but there was a recent sale that was more than five hundred thousand dollars more than that amount, so we would like for them to consider revising their, what they've.
We're trying to intervene in the property purchases of.
No, 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 these are already.
Evaluation?
So the valuation was made, so like, let's say that a business was valued by the county property for five million dollars, and just recently it sold for eight million dollars, and then that would meet the threshold here to say, hey, we think it should be valued or it should be valued a little bit higher, closer to what the sale price was, in order for, I guess, a more fair application of the millage on that property.
So we're advocating for increased revenue from that property based on, correct, the fair market value versus the sale price?
Correct.
Thank you.
So we have quite a few of these. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve filing resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner Alpine Income Property, OPLP. Then B, we have another one where the superintendent recommends the Board of Education to approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner BF Dayton LLC. And then C, the same type of recommendation to the Board of Education from the superintendent to approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner CP Spring Rule Pike LLC. D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner DS Two Real Estate Holdings LLC. E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner SMSJ Hospitality LLC. And then F, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner TWC Dayton LLC. Next, we have the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner Viva Living Miami'sburg LLC. And we have H, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three due to incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner four-six-two-oh Wesley LLC. All right. All right. It is recommended, and then we'll go to the approval of those items A through H. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Two, Items A through H, to adopt a resolution for each complaint against valuation of real property for tax year two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind me asking.
Okay, we'll make the, can we make the motion and then do the questions? That's what we usually do, right? Yeah. Okay, so let's do the motion first. Do we have a motion?
I move for the approval of Consent Agenda Two, Items A through H.
Second.
Okay, so first by Mr. Daffler and a second by Mr. Amsler. All right, Mr. Maury.
We're all getting taxed to death. All of our properties have went up in insane increments. I know the middle of the appeal myself, where mine was valued fifty percent higher in three years' timeframe, and my taxes went up almost double. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with exercising the position of authority to charge people more taxes on their property, to take that position without knowing more about each specific one. Is there any harm in tabling this while we look at each specific property and learn more about it before we vote?
Well, part of the reason why it's put on now is to meet the deadline, so the notice has to be sent at least seven days before the board adopts this resolution, which the attorneys have already done. They send out those notices, which just lets people know that this is up for possible a complaint by the board, and would give them the opportunity to show up here tonight. So that was already done, and then from here, I could reach out to who we work with at Scott Scriven to ask them, like, hey, is there a timeline we're trying to.
Do they identify these properties?
The law firm reviews recent sales of property. They kind of have them jump out because, again, these are properties where the sale was five hundred thousand dollars more than what it was, right?
And the school district is trying to intervene to raise it.
Kind of what this does is it ensures that these commercial properties within the district are appropriate, I'm reading off my legal, my legal list that I was given.
There's a lot there. That's why I'm low.
Yeah, no, ensures that commercial properties within the district are appropriately valued, which helps safeguard the district's tax base and reduce the comparative tax burden on residential property owners.
And when this got started, it started with on behalf of our board.
Oh, gosh.
It's been ongoing, yeah. It happens every year.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Is it common that we're just giving notice on this like just a few days before the deadline?
No, and I don't think it's the deadline for the actual hearings on this. This is just kind of, this is the initial process, and so this falls in line with when it's been typically done in the past, from my understanding.
I understand. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maury?
No.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the Human Resources Agenda Items, and we, first, we have the approval of personnel reports, certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revise Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. And then D, we have the approval of personnel reports supplemental stipend. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report supplemental stipend, certificated, classified. Once again, the same verbiage about employment in the Miami'sburg City School District. And then C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A and B. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A and B.
Second.
Okay, first by Mrs. Getter, a second by Mr. Amsler. Any questions or concerns?
Is the vetting process of staff done before asking a board approval or after?
We check all the references before we make a board recommendation.
So all the background checks and everything have already been done, it's just up to the board members to do.
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Next, we move on to agreements and contracts. We have A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. Martin School Travel, Washington DC trip, eight hundred ninety dollars per person. Maxim Healthcare Services, one hundred dollars per hour. Meta Solutions, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and four cents. The Warren County ESC, eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of agreements and contracts.
Second. So first by Mr. Amsler and a second by Mrs. Getter. Any questions, comments?
I could just do a quick overview for everyone, yeah. The Martin School Travel, that is for our twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Washington DC trip for next year, you have to start planning. And then the Maxim Healthcare Solution, that is for a special needs student to have nurse services. That's what that is for. And then I think you guys have the contracts as well. And then the Warren County contract is, again, a placement of a student at a wellness center, based on their case conference or other decisions. And then, I don't know if Justin wants to talk about Meta, we all want to talk about Meta. He wants to talk about Meta.
I've got a couple of them here, kind of list out some of the services from Meta. Is the fiscal support for state software redesign, fiscal support fee, SIS support, Bernie SIS package to power schools, progress book, grade book, virtual classroom, this is Bernie EMIS support, which goes to the state.
Your microphone.
I'm sorry. Gaggle accounts, IEP Anywhere Plus, hosted server, final forms, so Meta services all of those things. That's why it's a giant contract.
Provides our internet access and all of our software support. If Meta's down, it's, we're all down.
Right.
Kids are down, we're down. Google Classroom is down, so it doesn't happen very often.
By the way, you've all been pretty quiet over there, our student board group. Now, personally, do chime in.
Do you guys like the fact that Progress Book allows your parents to peer into your daily grades in school?
I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, good for you. That's a good answer. It's a great tool for parents to stay involved on a daily basis of what's wrong with the kids.
For sure, yeah. All right, roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, next, we'll move on to the financial agenda items. And A, it is recommended by the superintendent and treasurer that the Board of Education accepts the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three auditor's report. This single audit report covers the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. A copy of the full report is available in the treasurer's office. Do you want to talk about that now, Mr. Glevins, or?
Well, I mean, it's been shared with yours, just finally approved and given these hard copies that you all accept.
Yeah.
And happy to say that it was a clean audit.
Yeah, well, thanks to you and our previous treasurer, John F. B.
And all the ladies in the office.
Yes, yes.
Who really are the ones that make sure that that's good to go.
Yeah, thanks to those ladies as well. And then B, it is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in attached reports.
This is, every, every month, this gets brought to you all to be approved and saying, here's how much money we have, here's what the budget looks like, here's how it's broken down.
And then C, it is recommended by the treasurer, CFO, and superintendent that the Board of Education accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
This is another procedural item. Every year, the county will give us the tax rates, and then I give them to the board, and you all certify them and approve them. It's true, any existing levies that are already there, they just kind of run their calculations and say, hey, here's what the millage is going to be, and then they push it out to them. There's not a whole lot to say that you get in it because it's been over-approved.
Okay, thank you. And then D. The treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following purchases as presented. Advanced placement testing materials, twenty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars. So do you want to talk about that as well?
Yeah, sure. This is a purchase order that was over the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold that requires, through our policy, to bring it to you all to be approved. This is for advanced placement testing for students.
And they basically pay the fees for that, right?
Correct.
And this is just, yeah, we talked about that. We are, we meet with the student reps the Monday before the board meeting and go over the whole agenda, so we had a good conversation about that.
All right. Blessing, could you just discuss briefly about students that are on free reduced lunch and how they are cared for in this testing?
Sure. I mean, obviously, College Board recognizes that as well, so when Mrs. Schoff does her invoice, she reports how many of our students are paid and how many are free reduced lunch, and then we receive it like a voucher for that test.
Okay, so they, they are not responsible for making the payment for that test?
Correct.
But they can still take the test?
Yes.
That's a great question, Mrs. Getter. I want to make sure all kids.
Absolutely.
Can take that test if they wish to. E, it is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the then-and-now invoices as presented. Kettering Health, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So a while back, you all approved the contract with Kettering Health, and then we did not have a PO in place yet, so we just got the February and March invoices, and so the February ones, since we're out of February, has to be presented as a then-and-now. And since it's, again, it's over the three thousand dollar threshold, it has to be brought before the board. before the board.
And this is to cover employees that use the wellness clinic?
The wellness clinic.
On demand, yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
We had about a hundred and twenty-two participants in February.
What a great benefit.
So we know that as, as part of the, both the negotiated agreements that we settled last summer, because it's, it's spring, right? So it's, we're coming, whoo. So yes, and that is part of our wellness initiative and also their benefit package. So it's been a great partnership so far. And I, I know the folks that have used it, lots of them are in the room, all feel it's been very beneficial. So, thank you again for allowing us to enter into that partnership. It's been great.
And they don't have a co-pay when they go, correct?
Correct.
That's awesome. All right.
I'm sorry. I know, Steve, you and I talked about this, that this was, you're starting to see savings for this. Are we saving more than we're spending?
You have to go a year or two out to see what we're saving, but what's act-
Justin, thanks, Doc. So that's what we're tracking right now, is the first year of tracking to see are the cost savings going to affect the premium increases at the end. And that's something, we meet with Kettering every month. We have a standing meeting with Kettering where we take a look at how many people have used it. They can tell us what services, they don't tell us people who use it, but what the services are. And then what we do is with Heran, they get that information and they start comparing, like last year at this time in February, how many visits to doctors were there minus this to see if that's being offset and off balance for that.
So this is for what period of time?
It's for a month.
That's for one month?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have, well, piggyback on what you said, Mr. Mallory, that I see this more not just as a potential cost savings, but also as a recruitment and retention tool to get, you know, top-notch staff. Because if we're offering something like this and other districts are not, this, this is a big plus in the benefit column. So.
And, and kind of go back to your question again, when you, when you go to look at your increases in premiums each year, with the cost savings, what you see will be like if, like for example, with classified, if you have an eighty-five fifteen, where we pick up eighty-five percent of the, of the premium, if we have less people using our district-wide insurance and they're using this, that saves us, that's where your big savings comes in.
Well, will you receive an annual report at any time of what this annual outlay is versus what our, a comparison of our health insurance premiums do gauge? What type of year is that? And actually, we can, we can, we have one with Heran. Beth, when is there one with Heran coming up? Do you have it off the top of your head?
Do what?
Heran, district insurance.
Okay, but when, our next meeting or when?
Yeah, with Heran, our district insurance meeting, do you know when that is?
April, isn't it? Yeah, April.
It might be April.
Because we get your renewals for E P C at, about that time. So we can see if they're able to shop for a lower premium or a, a different provider at that time.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great benefit. I think it's awesome with the workout thing and the things you share with me, I think it's great. I'm just trying to be cognitive and responsible for the fact that money isn't something we've got an overabundance of. And, you know, trying to do a little due diligence and understanding how it affects that over time. So I appreciate you answering my question.
Yeah, we can get those reports and we can, maybe give notice sharing with you and even at some point if we'd like, Heran to even come to a board meeting and talk about healthcare and the clinic as well, we can arrange that as well too. So.
It sounds good. Anything else? All right, roll call.
Do I have a motion?
Oh. Do I have a motion for financial items A through B?
I move for the approval of financial items A through E.
Second. Okay, so a first by Mr. Dapler and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Now, roll call, please.
Actually, I have a couple of things I'd like to offer and I thought that, you know, the time to ask you our questions was after the motion, so, you know, being the financial time of the meeting, you know, first, I want to take a minute and congratulate you, Justin. Although it makes me sad just getting to know you and familiar with you and comfortable with you to see you leave. I very much enjoyed getting to know you. I appreciate your willingness to spend the time educating myself and the other board members on financial matters pertaining to our district. A lot of us like myself are certainly novices in this area and we have to lean on a guy like you very heavily to try to be well enough first to have a, to intelligent conversation about the things we're talking about. But, you know, the brief time that I've gotten to know you, I think your story serves as a guide to our students. You know, a story of a school teacher and a family man who worked hard to get his master's degree in economics in the right state while teaching. And to get your treasurer's license to better yourself and your family and to work hard and to provide a clean audit in your first year, I think those are all admirable. And I just want to take a minute and recognize you and let you know that I think you're example, you're an example to everyone around you, staff and students alike, about how hard work, dedication, just being a good person in general, in general, can take you very far in your life. And that being said, I just want to take a minute to let you know that I'm a fan of yours, I'll be rooting for you whether you're here or elsewhere, and I'll be continuing to pray for you and your family, continue to be blessed and recognized for all your hard work and dedication as a family man and a school treasurer. I appreciate you a bunch.
Well, I appreciate that.
That would be ditto from all of us. All right, roll call, please. Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Just thinking maybe I'll let those comments just sit in the air for a little while. Roll call, missing this agenda item. Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
All right. Okay, next we'll go to acceptance.
He's distracted, he still forgot to turn on his microphone.
Just leave it on.
Acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Five thousand, five hundred dollars from the Myamisburg Loyal Order of the Moose one-six-four-five to the Myamisburg High School Athletic Department towards the purchase of gators. It took me a while to figure out what gators were. I know now that the little-
Vehicles, yes.
-all over the place, yeah. Okay. And then another five thousand, five hundred from the Myamisburg, Ohio Eagles Aries two-three-zero-six to the Myamisburg High School Athletic Department towards the purchase of gators. One thousand dollars from the Myamisburg, Ohio Eagles Aries two-three-zero-six to Myamisburg City Schools for Destination Imagination. Books and materials valued at three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, four, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents from the Mark Twain Elementary School P T A to the Mark Twain Elementary School Library. Flyers valued at two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents from Myamisburg High School V M boosters to the Myamisburg City School District. One thousand dollars from the Nises and Taylor families to Myamisburg City Schools for K through two science materials. All right, do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second. Right, a first by Mr. Dapler and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Comments, questions?
You know, just in my first, what is this, my third meeting? I'm absolutely impressed at the generosity in our community donating things to our schools. I mean, it is outstanding. And to all these people each month that we recognize, we can't do enough to say thank you, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think we have some more donations coming in as well, they just haven't been confirmed. So, yes, thank you so much. Anything else? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
All right, next we'll go on to our report. And first we have our Miami Valley Career Technology Center Board Representative Molly Williams.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Great, how are you?
I didn't miss singing, that was amazing.
Yes, I'm so excited, so.
Awesome. So, actually, the meeting on March twelfth began at seven p.m. with roll call and minutes and the treasurer's report. And they also had a student that came in as a guest. He was a student from West Carrollton School and he really struggled in West Carrollton. He actually failed out his freshman year and he became a student out at M V C T C and found, just found what motivated him. And now he, he got up and he gave a presentation about what he went through and how he just changed his focus and how the teachers and staff helped him focus. And now he's planning on graduating, going to Sinclair and going on to Bowling Green in Bioscience. And so it's just cool to hear those stories at these meetings and see how these kids are taking opportunities. So, if you ever want to come to a board meeting and just sit the first twenty minutes, you go out really enthused, so. I am sure that they're open if you ever want to come to a meeting. So basically, applications continue to come in for the class year of two thousand and twenty-six and they're eleven percent from last year and twenty-three percent from the twenty-two, twenty-day school year. So they're really becoming more known for all of their programs and their programs are expanding every year. There were three employees that were retiring. One with sixteen years of service, one with twenty-five years of service, and one with thirty-five years in education and seven at the C T C. So, this kind of shows you the dedication of the staff out there and the years of experience that the kids are exposed to and everything. So I thought that was pretty impressive. There were five new hires recommended for certified employees as well. No bus drivers just here, sorry. Not needing an education background, I'm finding out more and more about this. So I went to the Southwest Ohio State Board Association and they said it was training and it was a banquet. And I was like, this is not training? So I, all of the students there out at the, let me get this right. It's out at the Green County Career Center, the students actually prepared the meal for the evening and they helped serve it, they helped bus the tables and clean up. They had a jazz band from Stivers that performed, they had the R O T C present the colors, and then they had a program and a presentation about the southwest region and who has been doing all these really cool things. We had a man that was honored for being on school boards in Ohio for forty years. And I was like, wow, that's just impressive. We have two men that are on the M V C T C. Greg Show had twenty years at Montgomery County at E S C and thirteen years at C T C. And then Terry Smith had thirty-five years at Montgomery County E S C and he was a board member for one year at Miami Valley. So, it's nice to know that there's people with that much experience in the room and helping out. And it's good for me to see the layers of commitment from the state and, and how in-depth everything has gone over. Some of the speakers were very inspiring as well, so, if you ever get a chance, go, it was great. It was just really cool. I'm also going to attend on this Sunday, they are having their National Honor Society pinning, so they asked the board members to come and help pin the students. And they have a hundred and fifty students that are going to be pinned this Sunday. So I thought that was pretty impressive too. Some of the Myamisburg students are shining out there. They continue to receive lots of opportunities to learn and perform. Three Myamisburg students qualified at the H O S A Regional Competition. We have Madeline Jewel who got first place. Talisa, I'm going to butcher some of these names, I'm sorry, but Talisa Bray, fourth place, and Maya Selfs, Sights with a fourth place, and they all go to state in April. So when I find out how they knew and everything, I'll let you know. The Skills U S A Southwest Regional Competition, which sounds, it's more carpentry and hands-on and what they can do. These students received awards in fifteen out of the twenty-eight competitions from M V C T C. And we had two students from Myamisburg, Alyssa Jackson won a silver award and Christopher Hopkins won a gold award. He also received a construction carpentry apprenticeship with Level B in Troy. So he's actually getting hands-on work experience as well as going to C T C. So you can tell he's really learning a lot and having great opportunities out there. Student Griffin Jung, J U N G, how do you say that? Jung?
Jung.
Uh, it's Young, I believe.
Oh, yeah. I don't see it. Sorry, sorry. But I wanted to just tell you that he had a long-term string quality research project and it was presented to the Ohio Wildlife Management Association and he's going to be going to one of their state presentations. He was only one of two high school students that were picked to do a presentation. Everybody else is college grade or professionals. So I thought this was very impressive as well, that he's learning so much out there. They just had a little verb about our Myamisburg STEM that actually takes place here in Myamisburg, that they're working on force balancing in the engineering program. And they're building, testing, and researching wooden gliders so that they can do the, the force imbalance and, and how you make planes in there. So I thought that was pretty cool. On February ninth, fifty-three kids from Kinder went to the Clear Career Exploration Lab. And I'm excited for them to go again next year because this lab moved to their brand new facilities and the last of the building is moving into their new facilities this month and next. And then I just wanted to remind you that again, on May tenth, they are going to have a grand opening and, and event that you're all welcome to, that you'll get to see those facilities. And I think, I mean, enrollment is climbing and once the whole facility is open, I think it's going to be very competitive to get in. So it's very impressive to see what they're doing and how they're expanding, so. It was a pretty short meeting for this month. So that is all I had to report. I did put in the treasurer's report and everything with this to hand in. I got my-
And give it to Brenda.
Okay.
Two thirty of minutes.
Thank you.
That would be a great word, Mrs. Williams.
You had mentioned that C T C will get more competitive to get in. Are there any students that get denied?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. You, you have to have certain grades, you have to have attendance, you, you know, there are requirements that the kids have to meet in order to go.
Good, cool, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, next we have our legislative liaison.
Next we have our legislative liaison, Mr. Mallory.
Please bear with me, my little pug puppy, I think, take my glasses, I've been running off with them, so. I have to thank Keith Basinger from Myamisburg Vision Care for fitting me the contacts this afternoon so I can see, so. But they're not double vision contacts, I've got my wife's Panther print readers on to try to, I printed this in twenty-four months. So if I struggle through this, please bear with me. And the State House has been out of session and will be until April the eighth, so there's not really much activity to report on. However, there are several pieces of act legislation that are expected to, again, be discussed at that time. And the April report will include more specific activity, I'm sure, on several fronts. Over the last weekend, over the last week or so, I had the opportunity of meeting and getting acquainted with our new state representative, Rodney Creach, went through redistricting and Rodney has taken over part of Myamisburg and I think Tom Young still has another part of it. But I got acquainted with Rodney, we exchanged numbers and plan to soon meet to become better acquainted. So the ongoing relationship with the Myamisburg School District and the State House can continue that our community has enjoyed while working with Representative Tom Young over recent years. Earlier today, as I do prior to every one of our meeting, I reached out to State Representative Young to discuss pending and forthcoming legislation he felt was of value and worthy for me to discuss tonight. During that call, I received some good news I'd like to pass on to both our board and community. There's some forthcoming legislation that's really kind of unique and pretty neat. It was co-written with Representative Young and students from the Valley View, West Carrollton, Centerville, Myamisburg District Leadership Councils. The legislation will allow students to meet their physical education credit requirements while participating in club sports that currently at this time don't qualify for phys ed credits in public schools. Because my kids have participated, I've seen others, I know where your kids have too. Because my kids have participated, I've seen others, I know where your kids have too. Many students, you know, they work incredibly hard in club sports to be next level athletes, whether it be in gymnastics, swimming, or a multitude of other club sports. And the local students, along with Representative Young, believe the club sport athletes deserve to have these club sports qualified for phys ed requirements. And the forthcoming legislation will achieve that. Representative Young also shared with me, he was very excited to have had the opportunity to work with so many wonderful students that were fully engaged. He described it as very mature and fully participating with him in drafting this legislation. While talking to Representative Young, I, I also shared some of my concerns that are going on in the district that kind of parlay to things that are happening throughout our state. And our community isn't unique. Over the last several years, there have been some significant changes in the direction that schools take under what's often called professional development. And I also feel that there's a need to improve transparency to both educate the public on these things when they're happening and to stop them from ever existing. While talking with Representative Young about this and considering myself, I'm confident that if full transparency happened with some of the things that we discussed, that they would have never been enabled and boards would have never even approved them to exist. But they have. And, you know, I know we, our board will soon start to tackle some of these tough issues and discuss them over the next coming weeks. And I also shared, you know, concern that I had emerging out of our Ohio School Board Training Session a couple of weeks ago. First, it was wonderful, it was thorough. I was tardy, which I deserve a check mark for or whatever I get, but I had to work late, I had my time wrong. But even though that offered us a bunch of information, there was something that really stuck out in my mind emerging, emerging out of it. And, you know, transparency is something that I feel very strong about. It's something that I believe is critically important. And to limit transparency to the public, I think, is the root of a lot of the problems that exist within our public schools throughout our entire nation. So, you know, when we were in that training, you know, my conversation with Representative Young was, you know, the OSB rep told us that some things simply are none of the public's business. And, you know, while I understand that some things are sensitive and should not be discussed publicly, I also believe that the majority of things have to be because the public is who is funding these things for our district. They're voting for our levies and we have to be completely transparent. I expressed to Representative Young that I felt this sentiment was backwards. And that I ran for this seat to represent the interest of taxpayers within their district and not hide anything to enable the existence of policies that I believe the majority of the community would not support. At the conclusion of the conversation, Representative Young did share with me that there are several matters that are, the State House is fielding a bunch of complaints from their constituents throughout the state on matters pertaining to these things, to mainly to diversity, equity, and inclusion matters and staff training and transparency concerns that have been illuminated. And he asked me to request some information be sent to him and his staff. But I'll forward to Justin and Laura to address. And that information as well, I think, would be very beneficial for our board to receive as well prior to meeting in our forthcoming work sessions so that our time together can be fruitful and both well-informed. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And next we'll go on to see your student achievement liaison, Mr. Anzler.
Again, our February District Student of the Month was Bear Elementary School kindergarten student Brooks Haddix. Along with that, other building representatives included Bauer Elementary School, Ms. Emma Wilson; Jane Chance Elementary School, Abigail Weaver; Kinder Elementary School, Skylar Cooper; Mark Twain Elementary School, Ellie Kreske; Metlerview Elementary School, Reed Hoopel; Mound Elementary School, Carter Weeks; Myamisburg Middle School, Lily Smith; and Myamisburg High School, Tisha Patel. So congratulations to all of our students of the month for February.
Thank you, Mr. Anzler. Next we have our Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition liaison, Mrs. Gatter.
I attended the meeting today, it was via Zoom. And I'm just gonna tell you, it's such an interesting group because they are in a different world. Because it's the Sheriff's Department and people who work for the Sheriff's Department and the surrounding. It's very interesting, a lot of people are involved in trying to reduce illegal drug use in our, in our area and protecting our population. May 10th will be a mental health awareness event in Washington Township at 11:00 AM. And there'll be more coming to the public as that gets closer. And then we had a presentation by Susan Hartzfeldt, who is an epidemiologist who focuses on the overdose population. She shared that we have, our unintentional overdose deaths are declining. We have an average, this is so sad, of 15 to 20 deaths per month. 86% involve opioids and fentanyl. About a quarter of the overdose deaths in 2024 so far were related to homelessness. Now, she didn't say that because the people were homeless, that's why they overdosed. But the people that did overdose, a quarter of them were homeless. Suicides are up 14% 2022 over 2023. There's an increase in suicides in black male youths, but that is similar to national data. There's an increase of 9% in suicides of white women between 20, the time 2022 to 2023. There is a new drug out for a long-term, it's a long-acting injectable called Praxati. It's for opioid use disorder, say that three times quickly. And the advantage is that it's non-divertible. So they can use it in the jails and then the, I call them patients. I don't know if they call them clients or patients or the inmates. But when they are out, because the concern is that they want to have a medication that the people who have addictions can use, not just in the jail system, but also when they are out. So they would be able to get this, it's an injectable, and they would be able to get this at a clinic or at their family doctor. And it can be even, it can be given monthly or weekly. So very, I thought that was very interesting, being a nurse, I'm very interested in that. The next meeting is an in-person meeting, it will be in May.
Thank you. Very interesting and sad.
Very sad.
Information, yes. All right, next we have E., our district news and information. Mr. Daffler will let us know all of that.
A little bit more uplifting here. The latest making a difference honorees are Metlerview Elementary School paraprofessionals Cheryl Krebs, Haley Tencher, and Chuck Winters, who were nominated by teacher Stacy Loxpay for going above and beyond with the support they give to her students. Stacy said Cheryl, Haley, and Chuck have supported my class all year. They go above and beyond in everything they do each day. They make genuine connections with my students and give support to help everyone preserve and thrive. All three have positive attitudes and make the best of each situation they encounter. They share laughs and hugs and encourage growth and positive attitudes. My students love them. Cheryl, Haley, and Chuck truly make a difference. Also recently honored was Bauer Elementary School counselor Jenna O'Connell. Jenna was nominated by Bauer fifth-grade teachers Cynthia Glenn, Elizabeth Middleton, and Jen Rowland, who said Jenna is also highly responsive to the needs of those she works with. Her proactive approach to problem-solving and her willingness to address concerns promptly demonstrate her commitment to creating a positive work environment. Jenna's responsiveness has contributed significantly to overall success of our staff and students. The nominations can be read here at board docs and the district websites. Congratulations to Madeline Whitserman for earning a chance to compete at the State Ohio Gymnastics Championship. Madeline finished 20th on the vault, 22nd on the bars, 32nd on the beam, 23rd on the floor, and 26th in the all-around competition. Myamisburg High School girls' basketball guard, Ally Hauss, ended her career with 1,065 total points, making her the eighth all-time scorer for Vikings. Congratulations, congratulations, Ally. Congratulations to Senior Fedora Botkin for being named a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Myamisburg High School principal, Michael Black, stated that Fedora is an excellent student and leader at Myamisburg High School. Good luck, Fedora. The Vikings finished third as a team in this year's G-Walk Wrestling Championship. Myamisburg was led by senior Jayden Cochran, Lincoln Cruel, Fletcher Rose, and Abel Inga. All were crowned conference champs. Myamisburg High School set a record-setting six wrestlers to the state championship. Three wrestlers were made, made it to the podium. Freshman Leela Cruel finished eighth. Abel Inga finished seventh, and Jayden Cochran finished sixth and tied the all-time school record for varsity ones of 148. Congratulations to all those athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Daffler. Next we'll go to our roundtable comment. And how about if we start with Sophia?
I want to give a couple shout-outs tonight. The first one to the AP program. I'm in a couple AP, well, one AP class, but I'm on track to take a couple more AP classes throughout my next two years. And I really, really enjoy the program. I think it's a really good opportunity for the students. And my teacher this year actually watches the board meetings, so I wanted to give a quick shout-out to him. So, I'm Pitrock, he's really, really good. And we love all the classes that the school offers. And then the other two things I want to say is the DC trip that the eight graders take, it's a really good opportunity. And it was, it was so much fun when I went. We had, we looked at so much things and it's really impressive how we could do so much stuff in like just a couple of days. But we had so much fun. And the third thing is, Mr. Mallory, when you were talking about your legislative, the student, the other student board reps and I were in a little group with other reps from other districts. And we get together in this group and we talk about bills that we want to pass, that we want to help. And the bill that they're talking about this year is the flex credit with the sports that you were talking about. So we got together and we had more meetings, but we were trying to gather information from the students on what they think about this flex credit and if they should be, if it should be like allowed to since, especially since Myamisburg already has a flex credit with the sports. But I'm sure Andrew can kind of piggyback what I'm saying. But we sent out a survey and we're really interested in sharing some information with you in upcoming meetings.
That's great. Are you guys part of the leadership council that worked with Representative Young?
Yes.
So, yes.
Great, was that a good experience? It sounded like it was a lot of fun for all of you.
Yeah, it was really good.
Yeah, it was, it was a good time, very informational, so.
Are you one of the politics then? Well, thank you for your effort.
Did you all receive that legislative draft? I, I received it today, I'll send it to you. Do you already have it?
I don't think I have it, I haven't checked my email, so I can check. But maybe you can forward it to us.
I would like to agree with everything Sophia said about the AP classes are great. She has to deal with me every day and they push because we sit next to each other, so. You know, I would just like to talk about that flex credit thing. I thought that's awesome that it's, you know, being talked about in Congress right now for the Ohio's government. That conference group that we zoomed onto was a good time. It was nice meeting other student reps and hearing their experiences. And for hopefully all the parents listening, next week, we're hoping to talk to Mr. Black because we're wanting to get more students' perspectives and, you know, thoughts on the whole bill. So we're setting up this table in the comments so students can come and give their votes for what they think should happen with this bill. And we're gonna give them a piece of candy and a little prize, so.
You're vying votes, you know that's illegal, don't you?
So, you know, hopefully that entices them to come and, you know, give some support and give some perspective and thoughts on the whole bill.
You know, the more I understand about it, it sounds nothing but positive. Is there been anybody that feels that there's a negative aspect to it?
There have been a couple people who think that it should not be offered because it's not beneficial. But, sorry, I'm gonna pull up my results real fast. We had 179 responses and only about nine of them said that this credit should not be allowed in schools.
Lesson in life, you can't please everyone. But good job, great work.
When is your next meeting with the other students from Valley View, West Carroll, Northmont, and Centerville? Do you have another?
I don't think we have a date yet.
I know we'll have one where the board, the board members and the students come. I don't have the date on that yet. But I know you all meet separately as well.
Does the, does the flex credit allow you to play sports and then you would take another elective in school? Instead of, in lieu of PE or weight training, I don't even know what's offered, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so essentially what's happening is, you know, there's school sanctioned sports. And we, the high school provides a PE waiver. So kids who take school sanctioned sports get that signed off after completing two seasons. However, the flex credit that the high school offers now is a little tedious. It's a lot of writing assignments, so you have to track your hours, you have to get signatures. And so, you know, I, when we went to that, zoomed down to that meeting, I found out there's some schools that don't even offer the flex credit. So even students who participate in sports outside of the school, they don't even get a chance at it, getting the PE credit. So it just, we're trying to make it more mainstream so that students, no matter what sport, can easily just get that credit. Because, oh, it was brought up by, I'm pretty sure, a student, a board rep from Centerville that, you know, and I can account for this, I don't personally want to give up two whole class spots, slots in my schedule for a PE credit. So if I'm eligible to receive that credit outside of school sanctions, you know, it just benefits everyone, so.
What sports in Myamisburg don't qualify?
So any dancing, I believe, any martial arts besides wrestling, that's a school sanctioned. Rowing, ice skating, aerobic activities. Hockey, yes, that was a big one. Yeah, hockey was a big one.
Does competition cheerlead qualify?
Yeah, under school sanctioned, yeah. So.
Any more shout-outs?
Just a couple things. You know, as we talked about before with the donations, we are very fortunate of all of our booster groups out there that are, that are really willing to help our students in many activities. And so we, and I know we've talked about this before, but a lot of times people will partner together with them through our permanent improvement funds to help get certain projects done in the district. And so I'm very thankful that the boosters are always willing to come to work with us to make those things happen. So it's, we are very blessed because I can tell you, talking to other HR folks and business directors, that not all boosters are as supportive in terms of that. So I just want to thank everyone again for those. So I just want to thank everyone again for this. And then, I'm trying to think what I was going to say. I was trying to think what I was going to say.
I got you.
I know. So we did, oh, we did go to Montgomery County, had a job fair a couple Saturdays ago, and Laura and Katie and I and Heather went up to it. It was successful, and we actually ended up hiring a couple of folks who met up there kind of shopping, so we had them come through a little tour of the district with us and kind of met the teachers and the buildings, and some of those were on the agenda tonight. We were, we were the lucky ones that were able to, to beat out some of our neighbors, so I'm very, very pleased about that, so.
Good job.
So, but just, I know, Jason, you mentioned about when we hire people doing the vetting and all that, so we do a lot of that, just our communities prior to a lot of times before we even bring people into interviews like that. We kind of go out and kind of do some background searching, things like that, a lot of times in our network. We will kind of make contacts with other administrators that we know, if they've worked in the district, to kind of ask them, you know, hey, if this person would come back to your district, would, would you hire him? So we try to do some underground work prior to kind of bringing them in, and, and so it was interesting because I did some mock interviews at Wright State and some of the other universities, and that's how we kind of met some of these people. I kind of do that ahead of time because, you know, if we can kind of get the, it, it's a market out there. It used to be when you would make job offers, teachers would take the first one, and now because of the shortage and the selection process out there, it's kind of like, you know, you have to, they interview, they interview us, so we're trying to find different ways to kind of really get the best candidates out there and try to get on the track early, so.
Candy.
I know, that's, I was just thinking that. Andrew, Andrew said candy, I should, we did, we brought a lot of candy though to the job fair. We came home with a lot of candy, but, you know. But, but that's it. I, I just, I just really want to thank our boosters out there. They do a fabulous job, and many of the things our kids would not be able to do, they step up and help us out, so thank you.
I'll be quick. Yes. Surprised, but I'm glad. Because they were down with four minutes to go, so. Ms. Ferrin, thank you for your comments earlier this evening. Thank you. I want to also say congratulations again to Mr. Brooks Haddix for being our Student of the Month that we honored tonight. I think I will concur with everybody that's sitting at this table, and Jason started that out, but Ms. Maggie, that, that was phenomenal. A, I can't sing. B, I couldn't remember that many words to a song to begin, to even sing that song, so she did a phenomenal job. That was just, I'm going to be out of town that weekend, so I won't be able to go, but, or I think I'm going to be, but, again, also I see Tammy sitting back there. She will probably be the first one to spread this around. We, Mr. Homan, we may not do our fire inspections at the beginning of the year. Bob and I and the fire chiefs had a meeting the other day, and we are looking into possibly doing those inspections at fall break. We've talked ahead, with everything going on at the beginning of the year, it is a struggle for principals, Ed, staff, people coming in, coming out, trying to do those inspections. Maybe once we, everybody gets settled, we may, we, I don't do them because of B being on the board, Bob would do them, but it's something we're looking into, and we may do those during fall break instead of at the beginning of the school year, so.
I think that would be much appreciated.
So, something we're looking into, so I just thought I'd let, you know, I get a final answer on that, I'll be certainly pass that around, so. Other than that, obviously the eclipse is coming up in a couple weeks. I'm sure Dr. Blessing's going to talk about that, so. Then we are off school and everybody will be. Yes, so with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Jason.
Thanks, Chris. Thirty seconds, I knew exactly what I was going to say, and I just completely forgot it. Well, you know, I have to say Maggie was absolutely impressive. I mean, you know, her voice, and to be able to stand there and have the courage in front of a camera and a bunch of people that you don't know, and let it rip and nail it, I'm still just awe-inspired, it was awesome. It was very much. I wish Brooks would have shook her hand though, you know, he's a cute little kid. So, you know, I want to wish everybody a safe and healthy and fun spring break. Here in the next couple weeks, we all get some time off to hopefully relax. Can you relax for a week?
Do you know him?
He works a lot. But beyond that, I want to recognize Justin Sweater. It's exceptional. I told him, you know, as far as treasures go, he certainly looks the part. No, you did, you did a fine job. Something that I want to take in about thirty seconds to clean up though is, I had a lot of interaction with constituents from the community that we all represent, and over the last month, and I want to reassure everybody in the public that I know how much it hurts to pay our high water bills and to pay our increasing property tax burden. I feel it, I understand it, I share your concern, and when it comes to the operation of our school district, I think, Justin, would you say it's fair that we are all actively engaged and on point and have a thorough understanding of where we're at and where we need to go?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, and we have a workshop scheduled in the next couple weeks where we're going to dive into that and try to educate each other as a group and develop some strategies to look out for the public interest as best we can. That's why we're here, and I think we all understand that that's a huge oversight responsibility, and I take it seriously, and I know my peers do as well. So, don't light my cellphone up if you see something you don't like on social media. I'm just kidding. I'm here to be called whenever anybody wants to reach out to me, but our eyes on the ball, so. Hope you guys have a great month and a good spring break, and I'll let Mr. Dachler talk for a minute. Ditto. Have a good spring break.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrin, and I want you to know, thank you, Mrs. Dr. Blessing. I am familiar with the Trevor Project, I have read through that, very interesting. Ditto with a lot of the things. I do want to say something about the school librarians. I'm a former teacher, I volunteered in the school, I'm still in the schools a lot, and our librarians just certainly make some connections with kids that really need connections. It's one of their favorite places to hang out in a library, where a librarian connects with them through a book or through a conversation. You are very powerful people. And again, just to thank the assistant principals, the paraprofessionals, the volunteers, and of course our administrators, and that's it.
I wanted to recognize one of our seniors. She is Shaylin Weaver. Did I say your last name right, Weaver?
It's Weber.
Just Weber, but two E's, thank you. Listen, guys, they are wonderful to have here. Thank you, Sophia and Andrew. Shaylin received the Gold Star Award in Girl Scouts, so I was able to attend her ceremony on Sunday, March the third, so it was fantastic. She did a wonderful project, and we could get her to come and speak, a butterfly project in one of our metro parks, it's up near Troutwood, and just the, just her intensity and desire to, to meet that goal, it was just great to celebrate, and I, and I got some Girl Scout cookies that day, so. It's wonderful. So congratulations to Shaylin, just one of our many seniors that we'll be celebrating very shortly, because April is right around the corner, so definitely a shout-out to her. Also, a shout-out to our Miami'sburg band tubas. I don't know if you, fun fact, but I'm a big basketball fan, as many of you know. They were at the First Four in Dayton, and Colorado State used them because they couldn't fly their tubas on the plane, so Mr. Wintersheimer made it known that our tubas were on TV and famous on Tuesday night, and at the First Four at Dayton Arena, so that was exciting. And then just a reminder to our staff, our students, our community, that our calendar survey is out. We're getting ready to figure out our twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. Our strategic plan sense of belonging survey is out as well, so please participate, and we want to hear your voice. And for the, for our calamity day, for April eighth, for the eclipse, Mr. Homan and I have attended several meetings with our emergency management, and they really do encourage us all to stay home. Stay off of the streets, use your safety glasses, and just watch the eclipse from the comfort of your yard, because we are one of the top ten cities, Dayton area, as being selected as the best place to view the eclipse. So our emergency management is worried about our roads and getting folks that need emergency care or hospitalization during that day, so we're all to stay home, so that's why we're having our calamity day, so. And then I just want to shout out to Mr. Freeze and our students from his class for recording. They did a wonderful job last month, and I think everyone appreciates having that video, so we appreciate their willingness to come and record our meetings. And I, congratulations to Justin, but he is going to be with us until July, so we're going to work, keep working really hard until then. And all of our students, all of our staff, all of our families, a safe and well-rested, relaxing spring break, so thank you.
I want to congratulate Brooks Haddix, our Student of the Month. I'm excited about his passionate, passion for learning and leadership at such a young age. That's, that's amazing. I expect great things from him in the future. I'm looking forward to the Little Mermaid performance. Maggie's preview should make everyone mark their calendar for the shows, April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. And I want to also recognize our librarians, National School Library Month. The library has always been a peaceful place for me, and I'm thankful for our lovely school libraries. If you ever have a chance to go to, I, I've recently been visiting some elementary schools, and what a, what beautiful libraries we have in our elementary schools. Remember that readers are leaders. That's it for me.
I just wanted to say that in regards to the clean audit that we received, John Espy did have the first six months of that fiscal year, and then John mentored me through the last six months of it. Marilyn Cooper, who was the Assistant Treasurer, makes a lot of that possible, and then she was replaced by Nicole Thunderbird, Pam Bell in our office, and Kate Burden. As a team, they all are the reason why we had a clean audit. And Alicia Wiggins, I don't think that she was with us yet, but I'm sure that she will help with the next one, so thanks.
I just wanted to say thank you again for this opportunity. I have really enjoyed being at both meetings and just seeing all the exciting things that the kids these days are doing and completing and exceeding at. And I'm very happy to see that you guys are pursuing this extra credit. I had a daughter that graduated in sixteen, and she spent millions of hours on dance and still had to take gym, and, you know, so, and good for you. And I'm glad that you guys are pursuing this and making this happen so that you can do other things with your child, so. And happy spring break, everyone.
Next we will adjourn. I just want to say, board members, don't leave after we adjourn, please. We need to talk about some dates, okay?
Are we going to rehearse our duet? Don't we have to sing at some point?
You don't want to hear me sing, okay? All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned, second.
First by Mr. Dachler, and then a second by Mr. Homan.
Mr. Mallory? Yes. Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Angler? Yes. Mr. Dachler? Yes. Mrs. Gettrick?
Yes. All right, may be adjourned.
Seventy-seven forty-seven.